I like the raspberry decor. It's beautiful.
Well, it just, you're just looking at one. Yes, I'll, I'll take that. Don't look at the rest of the house. My daughter designed those barbed wire boots when she was an art major at Whitman College. Ah, there's Ashley.
I thought they were lights.
You're ready to go, Steve?
Okay. Okay, uh, welcome everybody to the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Public Outreach Committee meeting. Uh, we're starting the meeting at two thirty four P M. Uh, let's all introduce ourselves. I'm Steve Rosenberg. I'm a Moretown representative on the school board.
I'm Bobby Rude. I'm a Wakefield representative on the school board.
I'm Cindy Sanning, Duck Spray representative on the school board.
Ashley Woods, Warren rep on the school board and current board chair.
Lisa Essler, CFO for the school district.
Shannon Wisdom, Director of Communications and Enrollment for the School District.
Great. Alright, thanks, everybody. Uh, I'm looking to see if there's any members from the public, but as usual, I don't really know how to find them if they're here. Does anybody ask you, do you know how to do this?
Should be, if you are, if you go to up at the top right where we can see, make a gallery view. There's, there's like a dropdown up there that would have part of people, like other people in attendance, if you, do you see that? No?
No, there's nobody there, I guess.
I guess.
Okay, so if, if your viewing is from the public and you want to speak, what do they do? Raise their hand?
Yeah, raise their virtual hand.
Yep, okay. Uh, other than that, let's move on. Okay, we need to approve the meeting minutes from the September thirtieth meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thanks. Alright.
I just read your report. Nice job.
Well, it's, it's a mess thing.
Well, but it's, it's, it's a good read. It's not painful. You know what I mean? There's like a lot of solid truths in there.
Okay, so we're segueing into, to me, the main topic of the meeting, which is uh, I feel like a victim of success, uh, in that we've had over seven hundred responses to the survey and I did just, uh, send around an email with a preliminary draft of overview of the survey. And if you have that available, uh, some of the questions towards the end were answered by uh, Chat G P T and I think we all agree that it did a kind of pretty poor job.
It answered them, it answered people? What? What do you mean?
Well, I mean, it just, it just lists common themes with no analysis and no real breakdown.
Yes, I agree with that.
Listless list.
Yeah, I don't like that so much.
And it was repetitive.
It's very repetitive.
I was meaning more your actual stats from the top. I mean, just that there's yeah, you know, people definitely, there, there's not a ton of support here, I think, is the, the main theme I got from it for, for redistricting at all.
Yeah, right. So, uh, I guess what I'd like to do is two things. One is to get ideas on better organization of the uh, report, which I think Cindy can help a lot with. And secondly, to ask Cindy and Ashley what, what they want from this report.
Okay, could I also offer that, um, you don't have any of the answers, the sheet that I sent out about question seven? This, this shows me only going through question six, and I had sent you some a, a extensive page of comments for the first hundred on question seven. Are you waiting for that or?
Uh, yes, and maybe after we have this discussion and better understand what format we want, then you, you can finish.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. I just wondered, you know, whether, I didn't know what this was. Okay.
Uh, can I ask a couple of questions? Uh, sir, I have my camera off. I had a little procedure, little dermatology procedure today, so, but I wanna, uh, anyway, may I ask, uh, what, uh, are you hoping to present this at an upcoming board meeting?
Who, who is speaking?
Shannon.
Shannon.
Oh, okay. Hi, Shannon.
Hi.
Uh, well, um, I gave a preliminary report at the last board meeting. I could give a fuller one once the, uh, poll closes on Halloween. But the main function of this report is to give Ashley and Cindy material. They're gonna testify in front of the redistricting task force.
Okay, okay.
We don't have anything formal, Shannon, although Mike and I have touched base with a member of the task force and they will receive it. Cindy and I are gonna, um, go to public comment on the tenth. And, um, in my, in my fantasy, we talk, we get our three minutes and we have a speech that we're gonna make, um, and discuss what the results of the shirt, of the survey show. Um, and then we're gonna also have some way to give them a, the report that Steve's got in process here, um, digitally. So that we, we can back up what we're talking about with not the seven hundred responses, but but the narrative has to be about, a lot about, in part about that seven hundred people responded. I mean, it's ma, that is major for us, I think, that we, we have clear, we got, this is a big deal and people are in, and then use it as a, um, a way to present and then be part of that dialogue because they definitely wanna hear from districts and what people are doing and thinking and we, and we definitely had some real feedback here.
Yeah.
So.
Excuse me for asking though, was, did we move the deadline ahead? I thought the deadline was, was passed Sunday.
It was, but you know, Matt Henchon asked if we could just open it back up for a little bit because there were a bunch of teachers and people who wanted to fill it out.
Yeah.
So it was really closed on the twenty sixth, but now it's open again for a bit. And I mean, that is totally fine. People, I think it's really I think his point is that people wanna be heard and this feels like a way you can be heard, which I think people feel a little bit like what's happening up in Montpelier is in a vacuum and there's not really pu, public comment happening on a regular basis about it. So I, I think that's why he, I think that's where the idea came from.
No, well, that's great. I just will, I will send something out again on Front Porch Forum. I was able to link it to the survey on the school district website so that people could just click on that and, and go fill the survey out.
That's awesome.
We'll see what happens with that. And one person, and I did also put in a little bit of a statement about the Career Center and I just said personally what I'm doing. And, and one person got back to me and was pleased. She said she will vote for it because her grandson has benefited. So anyway, just, it was like a two-part thing.
Good, 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 good.
So Cindy and Ashley, do you want a written report that, you know, you can then just edit as you wish to submit to the committee?
I would love, I, I, I'd love to hear from Cindy. Um, I would love a report um, that, yes, that we can give them, that, that present exactly. I mean, I know it's a rough draft. I know I'm wildly inexperienced with reports. Uh, so, but I, I, but the themes of what people are thinking and, and the numbers on that, I think are critical to give to them. Um, but I, and the fact that we had such a big response in a place where we normally do not. That, but I also, I wa, I wanna work on, and I started drafting our words on that day. But what I'm, and I hope, Mike, I hope you'll kick in here too with some stats or whatever, like, we gotta juice it up. The, the, the energy I felt, um, when speaking with that task force member was there, um, you know, there, this is an impossible task in a lot of ways. And what they're being asked to do, there's no way to do it without a major sacrifice. So I, I feel vindicated in how I filled out their, their, um, their uh, survey because I, we, I was between what Steve said and my interpretation, I was pretty passionate about not about how negative it really is or feels right now. Um, but yes, we need a narrative. We need a narrative and I'm working on it and I'd like to run that by you, Steve, of course, and Cindy. Cause I think it'll be from both, that, both of us, but
Sure.
You know, three minutes of what this means, what this will do, what the damage is if we rush, what the damage is if we try to, you know, not save money, like slowly and carefully. You know, I don't, you know, you know better than me, so.
You had asked Steve what kind of, kind of my thinking. Uh, I would offer, having, from having sat on a similar panel just a year ago, uh, Cindy and Ashley are, they, they will be providing public comments. So they'll be limited in what they can share and the redistricting task, the committee, they are under the gun now for their report in just a little over a month. So public com, when you're listening to public comment, you're trying to listen for themes that reinforce the direction you're going or, uh, something that you haven't thought about. My guess is with the pressure on this committee and all of the work that they have to produce in a very short timeframe and the decisions they have to make, they're not gonna, there may be one or two people who take that full report that you send and that summary and read it. But I think it's important to have an executive summary because I think if, if you wanna read the majority of the people on that commit, that redistricting committee, it's gonna have to be said in those three minutes that Ashley and Cindy speak.
Yep.
To their, to their defense, they will not have time to read another report. Uh, but, but I would suggest though, like an executive summary is important in what Ashley and Cindy delivers, but I think you have three audiences. That's one of your audiences. The second audience is our own community.
Yeah.
To be able to share with them what the collective school district has shared through a tremendous, not, uh, seven hundred responses is just, I've not seen anything like that uh, in this district or in larger school systems. It, it's pretty remarkable that we have that level of engagement on this topic and it tells you something, that people are very passionate about this issue.
Yes.
I would say the third audience is, you know, the, the four of you and your ten colleagues on the school board because one of the other pieces we've heard from comment is that what's the school board doing to prepare us for that uncertain future? So this may give you some glimmers to what our community thinks you should be doing. So I think, I think they're your three audiences and in some ways the school board is probably one of the most pivotal ones because it, it, it provides, you know, some, some of the criticism is, oh, you're not doing anything um, to prepare because we don't quite know what that looks like, but seven hundred responses, you have a good idea of what the community thinks you should be doing now.
Yeah.
So, so an executive summary should be, I, I, I mean, if you have three minutes to talk, I mean, that's about a page of text.
Yep.
Do you want a one-page executive summary? Does that seem reasonable or is that too much for the committee?
I, I think I want to, that's the thing I wanna be able to email to them. What I wanna say to them is I wanna take that executive summary and roll the data from it into a, 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 a three-minute, um, heartfelt narrative about, uh, you know, what we stand to lose. Because I think that saying those things out loud, what we stand to lose, they need to be reminded and they need to know that the, uh, at least our little corner of the world, that, that is what, that's what's ringing out of the survey to me. I mean, these tiny little hopes that there'll be additional classes and opportunities for blah, blah, blah seem a little bit like lackluster up against more, a couple hours a day on the bus. And, um, and the closure potentially of these amazing schools that, um, are doing amazing work that we're just gonna take apart in an effort that has no real guarantee.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Ashley. I think that, you know, what came clear to me, at least in section, in question eight, was people really want, they wanna cost savings. They aren't against redistrict, redistricting if it's gonna result in cost savings, but overwhelmingly, everybody wants lower property taxes. And I don't know.
Right, and the bigger problems, you know, I read the V high summary of
Yeah.
the reasons why they were able to only do seven point three. And the, um, reasons why were cuts that were super specific. You know, one was Ozempic and those kind of drugs, weight loss drugs that are really helping people, um, but they've cut that um, across this, uh, you know, all the people and nobody can have that. That's a savings of sixteen million dollars.
Yeah.
And you can only have it if you're, if you're diabetic and you need it medically. And yes, that is a bummer and it is, it sucks for the people who really need it, but at the same time, that, if it's not medical, you know, do, is that our responsibility? And I, I was, I felt strongly that was a good decision on their part. Actually, all of their res, you know, it was pretty reasonable. And it made me realize, you know, you can cut, you can do it carefully and gently and not like slash things down. If it's smart, so, you know, I think our, our constituents are looking for this, these people to be smart. Not rash.
Right, to make it sound different. Can I ask a question about the, some of the numbers in the beginning? For instance, if fourteen people responded out of, oh wait, we have seventy-three out of one forty-two. Okay, but I was looking at, uh, with only ten percent, fourteen specifically skeptical of the Harvard Union Board. So, in other words, fourteen out of a hundred and forty-two, I just think we, you know, to be clear, twelve percent of what um, you know, so just to make sure that our numbers, I don't even know, yeah, but that, that's powerful to say what percentage, but out of
Yeah, was that out of the whole seven hundred or was that out of the people who mentioned the, the school board?
Right, that's why I wondered, cause ten percent would be seventy if it's out of seven hundred.
Yep, I'll make that clear.
Okay. Not, I, you know, not to.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I, I wondered actually, that, I questioned that when I got to it. That's about what it was out of.
But I think what Steve is asking is, so what would be helpful? So Ashley, you'd like uh, some sort of executive summary that might be more destined to the board. That we can certainly submit it to the legislators, but they may not have time to read it. But they're gonna be interested in the key takeaways in the comments.
Yes, yes, exactly that. That's it.
So we need comment, a lot of the comments, and we did that on another survey where we just wrote out some of the comments. You can't write them all, but.
Yeah, why don't we, if you wanna, um, while you're reading it and doing it, Bobby, you guys, if you can, you know, curate some of the really good comments that makes sense to include of, of people's fears, you know? People's hopes and people's fears. I mean, I don't wanna be like, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna come across like I'm coming for them or anything, but I, I like, like, we all, you know, I'm, I want it to just be representative of the, what people are really feeling here, which I think is a lot about we're gonna start to have real busing issues and we're going, um, that we didn't have before, where people were worrying about how long kids are on buses all the time. And the hopes and
And the cost of transporting, yeah.
And the hopes and dreams that we're gonna gain somehow, I, it's just, it isn't there. Not in our taxes and not in, um, the, uh, you know, the potential to make life so much better for students does not, does not trickle down here.
And I think Ashley's points, I'm sorry, Steve, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Mike.
Cause they, Ashley's points are really good and I think, I'm, I'm not speaking out of turn, that both the co-chairs of the redistrict committee are, they have a state representative and a state senator, and they are both on record as having opposed this legislation. So, but, but they've also said very specifically that they have a charge and that charge is to live, to deliver a report back to the legislature that outlines up to three different options. So I think they're trying to look for things that balance all the, all the concerns with, what the needs are and we, we need to find ways to.
Yes, like some suggestions, that's, Mike, that would be like, can you help with giving some positive reinforcement ideas and suggestions on what might be roots to, you know, the savings that we're hoping for, even if I'm just generalizing, you know what I mean? About avenues that we're hoping they're going to explore for the savings. As opposed to it being, we're all waiting to see if there's gonna be any savings from this idea. Wha, what about this? What about that? I'm sure you have a couple. I would love something in that line too. Some optimism, what could be.
I, I think, I, I think what, you know, we just, that there are efficiencies, like one of their, one of their proposals right now that's on the table, I'll be curious to see how it progresses, is essentially creating, for lack of a better term, big supervisory unions that pull the, kind of the central office functions, but allowing districts to function, you know, allowing hard to function as we are, but how do we pull our, our resources with other places? Uh, they're, they're looking at kind of a B O C's Regional Educational Service Agency model.
Yeah, that.
But I think saying, we, we, from, from our perspective as board members, there are costs that you still have not considered that are driving our budgets, like special education and, um,
Construction.
Construction. So don't see this, please don't see this redistricting as a panacea to all of a sudden fix our problems. Please make sure that the legislature knows that they need to still move on other fronts. But yes, there are some efficiencies that achieve. But we don't wanna sacrifice our communities' control over the school system. That is pivotal and if we, you know.
And there's gotta be a way. I mean, there.
For Vermont, there's a way.
There's a way. There definitely is. Okay, I loved all that. I have to get my.
You know, one thing that I wondered about, somebody asked on the section, quest, uh, question eight is, why do we focus on property tax and not income tax? And a question that I have is whether maybe there could be some sort of compromise or some expenses could be met by income and some of them by property. And I was listening to a report about legislature today, thinking about different ways that they can, uh, tap into second home tax or maybe a luxury tax, uh, for people who have a second home, you know, that there are different, different kinds of avenues that we could look at as sources of revenue.
I, I mean, I just don't, all those points are, are good, but I don't see them as part of this report.
No, they aren't, but it's just, it was just something that the question came up. Why, you know, why are they focusing? So are they considering what other revenue sources, you know, how creative can they be? If there is a way, there may be a way. Some untapped resources.
I, I would like to pull us back to the kind of structure of the report. So
Right.
If we could look at it for a second. Like, for example, on question five, that was me, a real person, just trying to summarize the responses. And I want to know, like Ashley and Cindy, are you comfortable with that sort of format if we add some good quotes?
I like your, uh, uh, you know, having talked with you about my concerns, I really liked the way you summarized question five. Yeah, really looking, I did, after you and I talked, I went through question five and I coded all the, just the question five. I didn't, Ashley and I took two different approaches to looking at this. She looked at people all the way across. I didn't look at that. I looked at question five and I just coded what our responses were. And just so you know, I know we've said maybe, what do people know about it? But more advanced classes, meaning, um, a host variety of advanced classes, but m, m, more variety in, in classes that are offered, these would be opportunities they would see if we, we, if we consolidated. This was what they would see coming through, that we don't have advanced classes. And the other big one that surprised me, that I wouldn't have thought of, was sports. Everywhere, they want more sport. The opportunity for more sports.
Different sports even. Yeah, I, I know.
Variety of sports, opportunities for competitions for them within the school. Kids.
Yeah, and there was concern about, but having less room for varsity attendance, yeah.
That was second. I did two hundred. I did the first two hundred down that column and I'll do the rest. But the, in the first two hundred, more sports was second, only to advanced classes. And also the issue of the, the, that the impression out there. While we don't believe this is the case, so we have to think how we respond to it. The impression, the third most interesting one was the issue that they thought that we would have a cost savings by
Yes.
um, combining.
They hoped, they hoped.
That was interesting. Four people in the first two hundred thought there would be no cost savings, or they would even cost more. That was on the, in the opportunities section. When I then did the next hundred of the, um, ones that were risks or concerns of combining of, of, uh, rec, and siling, the, um, absolutely without question, the biggest re, uh, thing, the biggest risks to doing a combined group was longer bus rides. That showed up in almost every comment. It was amazing to me. Uh, although it doesn't surprise me, it was just amazing, I thought. And then, um, loss of local control came through as a risk of combining that, that people were very unhappy about. And they also were afraid that we would have larger classes that would be a detriment to kids and kids.
A lot of that.
Those were the main ones that I saw, that just, they weren't identifiable by a person or anything. It was just, if you look at our communities out there, combined communities, um, uh, we can pull that together into one gun. And I thought that's a little bit what you were doing there in your question five, Steve.
Well, it was, but.
We see these advantages, we see these disadvantages, you know.
Yep.
But you can see, I just kinda gave the laundry list of, of themes.
But that's the report that I think the legislators need. Oh, somehow, um, Ashley, I think we need to be pulling together in our report to them, and all of us together, um, what our community sees. Even though we think it's kind, you know, we can comment on that we think it's crazy, uh, well, I don't know what, which particular one, but thinking about the transportation issue. I think that a lot of people think about that more than I thought they would. And I don't know that these legislators have a concept of how much, if we really increase the size of our districts, the extent to which that impacts in our communities' lives in a variety of ways.
Totally.
And I think that's what we wanna show and that's the way our community's perceiving this.
Yeah, I think our, what we say needs to be a, a direct reflection on what this survey says.
Right, that's what I think.
I agree, so let's.
That's what I think. And we can do it both ways, Ashley. I, I've just thought, you know, I wanna go back and look at it the way you did. I'm very interested to look at the extent to which the way somebody responds on question five relates to the way they respond on question six or seven or eight, Bobby, to mention ones that, that you've taken a closer look at.
And I also wonder, had we not asked the question right up front, what do you think is acceptable travel time for a kid on a bus? How much we would have heard of that. We did ask that, that's what I'm saying.
And then people said thirty minutes.
No, no, I, exactly, I know, but had we not specifically asked the question about that, right? We came back to that because we talked about it at the board and it felt like it was really relevant. So, had we not asked it, would a million people have mentioned it, I wonder? My question.
But it's a big concern.
Yeah.
It is. I'm, I, I absolutely agree that it is a big concern.
So I, I'm happy to take my question and maybe one other and go through seven hundred responses and pick out major themes.
And I'm happy to do that for seven and eight.
Yeah, but what, what I, I don't think I have the time or lifespan for is then to kinda go take individuals and go across all their questions.
No, I, we were talking earlier just about how we'd gone about reading it. And I have sat down and read like fifty people's responses all the way across. Like, I didn't even think to just answer, to do, just read one ques, I mean, I've certainly skipped around. But the, um, I was kind of trying to hear different town voices and staff and like, just, I don't know, I was looking at it a different way. But I, 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 I've definitely, I mean, I've read and seen the same themes that, that are, you guys are talking about, so. It's.
So I think one thing AI is good for is you can ask your favorite, uh, chatbot, like Like you upload the spreadsheet, then you say on question five, what percent of people discuss transportation? What percent of people discuss sports?
Yeah, wow.
It's good at that.
Yep.
I can finish, I can finish doing the coding for, for all of five. I have another, you know, 500 to do, but doesn't, it's not that. Difficult to do, once I got the system going for it.
Yeah.
I can even do that for five and six. I've done 100 of six and I've done 200 of five. And that was just in two kind of half afternoons each, so. And what I can do is I can then, um, create a list, uh, on my, you know, computer, you know, digital. And then just say how many did it, like 35 people think that larger class sizes are important. And then, then we can just decide, we can look at which are the, which are your big numbers there or not, that.
And Cindy, how do you decide the categories that you collect the numbers on?
I just went through, so just for example, I just went through and where I got another unique one, I just added it to my list. So my list for six, which I did better than my list for five, I have less parent input. Well, there are nine people that have already, and I've only gotten through 100, nine people said less parent input. And then in the next one, I might have had somebody who just said, oh, all of your examples from above, so I have that, all our examples. Longer bus rides is clear, you know, it's a clear code. Um, and so I really just coded almost everything, so I have some that are only one. I have one not sure, one no governance issues were noted. I had one person who felt that the. The report didn't ask about the whole issue of governance in the school board itself. Now, I know you've seen some other stuff about that, but I haven't seen that yet.
That this survey, that this survey didn't ask about what?
About, um, the governance issue and, and how you get on school boards and is this gonna change the way we decide? School board representation and stuff like that. It was an. Isn't it, it was just one person though, that's not worth a whole lot in a study out of 700.
Because it's undetermined, right?
I went through, I just sat there with my, you know, with my down arrow, and I just went down each one. And each time I saw something that was new, I added it as a code. And then, so all of the, so many of them combine larger classes with longer bus rides. This is on number fi- on number six. So it, that's what they would say, they'd say longer bus rides, larger classes, and that was it, that's all it says in the, in that column.
Okay.
And then you can just take a look at it and see if it's helpful or not, really.
Uh, I guarantee you it'll be helpful. I appreciate it.
I think so. I think it's already help, it's already helpful to me. I was interested that at least 15 in that first 100 had concerns about loss of local control. This is our on risks or, or concerns. I thought this one did, worked a little better than my other one. And.
All right.
Anyway, so that's, that's what I did so far.
Thank you. So what, what's the timeline? When do you want, for example, an executive summary?
Well, our meeting that we're gonna be with our board again is on the 5th. That is in seven days, no, uh, eight days. Um, then the, the meeting is on the 10th. So I, um, a- as soon as possible.
Yep.
Well, if we had a draft that we could at least be, at least be talking about some, some summation to our board.
Yes, that would be nice.
We have that on, do we have that on our, um?
We do, we do, we have Steve kind of giving a little update, and that update will be whatever, wherever he's at on that.
Okay.
Because the nice thing about the.
For next week.
Yeah, and the board meeting, I mean, the board members have access to the survey results, can they have that? Or do they already?
Uh, I, I don't think they do.
But ultimately, when we're done, can they, can we just share that with them so that they can look at it out, yeah.
We can tell them on the 5th that.
Yes, and that, and then like, we'll give our summary and we'll use the summary to, to do our. Public comment with the legislate, with the task force, but, um. But for the board, they can hear our summary at the meeting and then, um, and we can give them access and you can say, you can. You can go ahead into those and pick it apart if you would like to, you know, I mean, that.
Okay.
Okay, so what are we saying? I'm just taking notes. What are we saying? Uh, when is the task force summary due?
Hopefully by our meeting on the 5th. But if, if he's not, if, if you don't, if it's not already and it's just still in something we can share, it doesn't have to be perfect. I mean, nobody's expecting it, this is our survey, our executive summary.
I, I have a question for Dr. Mike. I mean, I'm used to seeing executive summaries that are a paragraph. But we're talking also about creating maybe a page worth of, uh, material that. Ashley and Cindy can use for testimony. I mean, what, what, what do you think? Should the executive summary just be a paragraph or more?
I think it sounds like, from what the conversation was, it sounds like that executive summary is more gonna be for the board and the community. And Ashley and Cindy are gonna pull from that and kind of. Make it their, their own plea, so I, I think that's probably separate.
So it probably doesn't need to be super long.
No, but, but I think to your point, ma- it may, that may be more than a paragraph, considering we had 700 responses.
Yeah. Just, just roll in.
And, and I gotta say, like, this group is amazing. Steve, Bobby, your work has been. The fact that we have so many responses, that, that was the purpose of this committee. And kind of your summaries already and how you're going through it and how Cindy's going through it, it's just, it's impressive.
Yeah.
That's great. So Steve, do you need, I mean, would it be helpful if you and I got together for a, a work session to just kind of. Put together stuff by a certain date? Would that be helpful to you or not?
Uh, I kind of prefer working on my own and sending you stuff and getting response.
Okay. I just didn't know if you, you know, two minds meeting together, we could edit, but that, that sounds good, okay.
And it keeps it a little, from my open meeting law, it keeps it a little clear, he's just doing work his chair on the side and then sharing it with.
Right, right, okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, so the plan is to have. I don't know what, two or three paragraph executive summary ready for the board meeting and at the same time work on a fuller report.
Yeah, when we, certainly when we have an all of our data, and I mean, ultimately, the. We could take the names off and share all the data, right? I mean, it can just be on the public, whatever, at some point, I mean. If there's nothing in there that's.
Uh, I, I don't know how I feel about that, because I feel people s- respond with this sense that. These are anonymous responses.
Yeah. Well, I, um, I think that is what we want, and I will start working on the. On our plea slash narrative that we're gonna say with room to add in data. And pieces from the executive summary.
Yeah, that sounds great, and, uh. Also, one thing to point out is that the, the number of people who have asked to be on an email list is now up to 212.
Wow.
Great.
I mean, people are really interested in this stuff, it's.
They are.
Which email list are we talking about?
The very last question, it says if he, if he wants to speak.
Oh, okay, all right, somehow I didn't, I didn't get to that, okay, great.
So what are we saying, uh, cause I just put out a front porch forum thing on Friday saying, get it by Sunday. We're looking for responses by the 26th. Now, what do I say? Now I should put something else on?
I don't think you need to, Cindy. I don't think, I mean, this is, this was really for Matt Henchin. I think we don't need to go too much, I mean, if people go looking, it's there, so they can, they can fill it out. I don't think we need to push any further.
I see Shannon has her hand up.
Yeah, are there, uh, first of all, can I get edit access to the survey? Um, just so that, um, maybe you could advise me if there are a couple of questions that might lend themselves better to. Like some sort of visual representation, maybe some, something in a table or something that might be useful for the community later.
I like your little graph that you do have in there, Steve.
Yeah, more of that, and, and AI can, AI might be able to help with, uh, some. More visual representation as well, not, not for Ashley.
My graph came from.
Right.
AI had some very nice, actually, the one part of the AI report I liked was their early part where they were looking at that quantitative kind of representation of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Mike produced his version that had a lot of graphs in it too.
Okay.
Uh, so, yeah, Shannon, I'll give you edit access.
Okay.
All right, uh, I think we have more or less a game plan. Am I missing anything?
Don't think so.
No, so basically, just to summarize, I mean, I, you know, I just took brief notes, but. Uh, structure and formatting, Steve's gonna go through to make sure math is accurate and we'll clarify what the numbers represent. Mike suggested that we think about the three audiences, legis- uh, the task force. May not have time to read the whole thing, but, you know, getting some executive summary to them and then. Uh, and then we talked about the other, our community and, um, the school board as being other audiences.
Yeah, I want to do a piece in the Valley Reporter, and I know the executive summary and the roundabout, of course. Where we could, we can have a written piece from us. Cindy and I can write a piece about presenting at the state and how much it, how important this is and what an impact. The thanking the community for so many people being part of the survey and, you know, all that. We can roll all that into a written something, I think.
Okay, so Ashley and Cindy will do that.
Yep. And I'm already done, that, I'm kind of. I think my two things are part and parcel of the same thing, my two written things.
Part and parcel of what, Ashley?
Well, my writing, our writing, what we're gonna, what we're gonna say at the, at public comment with the task force is gonna have pieces of what ends up in the papers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. Uh. Very cool. Okay, uh, maybe last order of business is to set up a time for a next meeting. I, I'm not sure what we need a next meeting for at this point. I mean, honestly.
Maybe, nothing, because we have to get ready for the, uh, November 5th board meeting. I don't think we could meet before then, but maybe following the board meeting, we may want to set up another meeting, if it seems like there's more to do.
Ash, Cindy, have you listed on your board reports to give an update?
Yeah.
I think we, we can do more of what we need to be doing in, in, coming ahead is as we get, as people get drafts that they think. Or they're comfortable presenting as a, something we can really work with, emailing them back and forth to e- emailing them to each other.
Yeah, sure, rather than a meeting, and, I mean, I'm just wondering.
Do it to the committee, I mean, just, um, not email to the whole.
Trying to schedule our next meeting, what would be the purpose of the?
What would be the purpose of the next meeting? Let's just think about that for a second.
And I'm gonna jump in, I apologize, I have a meeting at the Waitsfield School at 3:30, so I need to duck out. You can need me to do Steve.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, thanks for your input.
Thank you.
So what is the purpose of our next meeting is to, well, at. In January, we're gonna get the task committee report, but, but. We've got Thanksgiving and Christmas coming up, so somewhere in all of that, do we think we need, what do we need?
Well, if we need a meeting, we only need to 48 hours to warn it, so if the S H I T hits the fan on some level. And we need to meet, we can warn a meeting on the fly, unless you want to put a space holder in place. In a month that we tentatively, like we did.
Yeah, but.
It doesn't hurt us to do that, so whatever you want to do works for me.
Yeah, so.
The only other thing, wait, oh, can I just make one idea, suggestion here?
Yep.
Sure.
Um, you know, this is not the only thing that our community is interested in, and I think that we may need a meeting sometime at the end of November or early. Just, or end of December.
For budget.
To talk about with, where we're at with budget and stuff, some of the other things that we need to be communicating with our communities about.
And that could get hairy too, so, um.
Yeah.
It is the 28th of November, we're all on break, we have our meeting on November 5th, our meeting on. November 19th, oh no, we don't have, yes, we do.
Yeah.
Then we do.
November 19th is our second meeting, and that's where I'm doing the first pass of the budget.
Yep.
Yeah, so let's, maybe like the first week of December before that December board meeting.
Okay. Just tended to, how about we put it in, um, for this time, like we've been doing it, 2:30 on the Tuesday?
Uh, that's.
The second.
What do you think, Steve?
Yeah, really, it's up to you, Steve.
Well, um. That's okay, 2:30 on the second is good.
All right, tentative, public outreach.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, there it is, in the notes, okay.
Awesome. You guys are all awesome. Thanks for the hard work on it all, really.
You're welcome. I mean, it's, I'm, I'm so blown away by the response, like we really. Really hit an issue people really care about.
Yeah, it's amazing, people want, you know, some people did talk to me, I saw, I met, uh, some PTO members from Waitsfield, they just said, you know, we don't know the answers to these things. I said, I know, we don't, we just wanted to get your thoughts and opinions, you know, what you're, how it strikes you and. The more information we have, the better.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Very good. Uh, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. So moved.
All right, Ashley moves Cindy second, all in favor?
I.
I.
All right, thanks everybody very much.
Thanks, guys. Dude, all, okay, I'm gonna meet you there, down there, it's set, we have to be there at 3, so I'll meet you there at 2 at Crossit.
Okay, have a great time, you guys, that's always an inspiring, it's an inspiring workshop.
Yeah, it'll be good. Take care, guys.
Bye, everybody.
We'll fill you in.
We will.
Bye.
Okay, bye, everybody.